I want to make a, just one quick now. Got a couple of, a couple of Boy Scouts here. I'd like for you two to stand up and be recognized and tell us who you are and what scout troop you're from.
Uh, I'm Craig Williams. I'm from, uh, troop sixty-two in Cumming, Georgia.
I'm Darren Williams, from troop sixty-two in Cumming, Georgia.
It's good to have you all here. Thank y'all for coming. Welcome. Well, brought you to, uh, well, brought you two to Pickens County.
Uh, we live in Pickens.
Oh, okay. Well, it's goo- it's good to have you all here. Uh, two more minutes? Please, y'all stand up for record and be recognized. And you are?
Oh, okay. I'm Jenny Morris, and I'm a senior here at Pickens High School, and I'm from Youth Leadership.
I'm Carrie Ash, and I'm a junior at Pickens High School in Youth Leadership.
I'm Juliana Payne, and I am in eleventh grade at Pickens High School, and I am in Youth Leadership.
Well, thank y'all for coming. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Ladies and gentlemen, it's, uh, it's five-thirty here. We're gonna get this, uh, get this meeting started. At this time, let's stand for a moment of prayer, please. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful that you have blessed us with a beautiful day today, dear Lord. We hope and pray that you be with us this evening and be with our state and federal government as we go through these election years. Guide and direct us, Lord, that we might do what is right for your will and for the will of the people of Pickens County. We humbly pray in your holy, sweet name. Amen. And while we're standing, I'd like the two gentlemen from the Boy Scouts to do pledge allegiance for us today. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. You see? All right. That brings us down to item number three, and, uh, Mr. Dever, we have amendments to the agenda. Okay, amendments to the agenda on the three, under item, uh, nine, we have new business, discussion of adopting and amending chapter four of the Pickens County Court and Court ordinances, and, uh, about advertising and signs. And number two, under item seven, consent agenda, sign Keep Pickens Beautiful proclamation. I need a movement second to accept those.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We also, this wasn't included any time ago on the agenda, but it's another proclamation you signed for Pickens First Week Proclamation.
All right, and I would like to put this under, under new business also.
That will go under consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
You'll sign it.
All right, that will go under consent agenda. If I may, get a movement second to approve these three items on the amendments to the agenda, please.
Sure.
Have a movement second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number four on the approval, uh, for approval of the agenda. I need a movement second for approval of the agenda for tonight.
Sure.
Have a movement second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. Now, that brings us down to item number five, employee recognition. This is a, again, that Ms. Becky has, has run with, and it's been very, uh, very nice that she was doing this in the county, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, my favorite part of the evening. It has been a privilege for me to honor our longtime employees, and, uh, tonight we have a couple of ten years of service certificates. Kathy L. Quentin with the Sheriff's Office. Thank you so much, we appreciate you. And Randy Kerr with the Public Works Department, ten years. Thanks, I appreciate you doing it.
Now, before, before they-
And we need to get some pictures.
Yeah, before y'all sit back there, we want to get some pictures up front. Right on down. Right on down. Hold on, hold on, we gotta get Jerry.
Two of them together might break the camera now.
All right, that's gonna bring us down to item number six, under financial, under financial report. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Harvey, uh, once that thing warms up, and let you give us the financial report.
Okay, the, um, the report that y'all have in front of you is for, um, two months of our twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, uh, fiscal year budget, and the expenditure budgets should be sixteen point seven percent or, uh, or less. The, um, we'll go over the revenues first. For, um, taxes, we collected a million thirteen thousand fifty-five dollars. For licenses and permits, thirty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars. Intergovernmental is four hundred seventy-two thousand eight eighty-two. Charges for services is four forty-eight, three oh nine. Uh, fines and forfeitures, thirty-six thousand four seventy-five, interest of nine ninety-two, and, um, other revenue, sixteen thousand fifty-seven dollars, for a total of two million twenty dollars, twenty thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars. And that's eight point four eight percent of the, uh, of the budget, the revenue budget. So going to the expenditures, under general government, um, the expenditure amount so far is three hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars, and that's eleven point eight one percent. Under judicial, um, the expenditures are three hundred ninety-eight thousand two forty-eight, that's eleven point seven six percent. For, um, public safety, expenditures are a million six twenty-six, thirty dollars, and that's thirteen point three eight eight percent of their, um, of their budget number. If you'll notice the EMA, um, it, it is the only, um, budget in that function that, that is over budget, and that's due to that, um, code red system payment that we do in January. It's twenty thousand dollars, so it's over their budget. That's why excuse that budget for one. So then we'll go to the, um, public works budget, and their expenditures so far are four hundred four thousand three twenty-six. The Health Department Senior Center and the MATS program, eighty-six thousand two fifty-six, that's ten point nine one percent. For culture and recreation, one hundred thousand two hundred nineteen dollars, and that's ten point seven nine percent. For, um, housing and development, total is seventy-one thousand nine nineteen, and that's eleven point eighty-four percent. So overall, the general fund expenditures are three million sixty thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars, and that's twelve point eight four percent, which is, um, about three point eight percent under the, uh, allowable level. For the, um, enterprise funds, the Water Department, expenditures are a hundred thirty-two thousand fifty-three dollars, six point three nine percent. The airport is at forty thousand twenty-three dollars, and that's ten point six six percent of their budget. The, um, the line item reports were sent to, um, department heads and the elected officials on, um, March tenth, and I have copies of those if y'all ever need to see those.
And just a, just a quick question. Can you give us an update on how the audit's coming? I know it's, the letter report done.
We are. In fact, they, they were here, uh, two weeks ago, and they obviously, they did the field work on all the agencies, the elected officials and, um, the outside offices. Um, that went very well. They will be here the first week in April to do the field work for, for our, our office, for the entire, um, general fund, for all the budgets. So, um, it's, it's looking good. It's gonna be a busy, a busy time, but we're getting there. The, um, of course, the audit has to be into the state by June thirtieth, and they're, they are hopeful that we will have a draft of the audit by the end of May.
All right.
Um, along with the budget report, are there any questions on the February report?
Yes, I was wondering about this, uh, public education being at twenty-five percent.
Oh, yes. Um, sorry, I didn't, I didn't point that out, but that, that is, uh, Keep Pickens Beautiful, and what we do is we do a quarterly payment to them, and that first quarter payment has been paid, so that's twenty-five percent.
That's what, that's my bar's sitting right there, back in the room right there.
Thank you. That's my salary for the quarter.
Um, also, I, I gave you a printout. There's, um, there are two departments that are requesting budget amendments for, um, for the two thousand sixteen budget. Uh, the Tax Commissioner needs an increase of twelve thousand dollars, and that's for, um, upgrade and office furniture for her office. I think there was a, a mandate from the Department of Revenue that, um, they needed more, the, the state is furnishing some equipment, some additional printers, but they just didn't have room in their workstations for those, so, um, I think it's been a while since it's been upgraded.
It has, and it's been a while. The building was done in oh-five, it's been a while since the upgrade. So while she's having to upgrade the equipment through the state, look, that state furnished on that part, the, the furniture and the carpet in that area needs to be replaced, so while we're doing the whole thing, we thought we'd just go ahead and, and, and they're cutting down, I think there's, y'all got about six cubicles, we're cutting that down to five, and then that'll open everything up and give them a little more room to operate up there, and, uh, and we do all that.
And they're gonna be more like workstations, like the Water Department has. I think it's gonna be more convenient.
More user-friendly, more more convenient for them.
Um, and that twelve thousand dollar number includes the, um, the renovation of the carpet and the equipment, and, I'm sorry, the furniture and everything. And the probate judge requested, or he's, he's sent an email that he needs a new fingerprint scanner, um, they took over doing the firearms, doing the fingerprint, the firearms, uh, permits last year, and the, the Sheriff's Office gave them an old, um, furnished them with an old fingerprint machine, and it is just, um, it needs to be replaced. And he did send me a quote, the total cost of the machine is nine thousand four ninety-six, but the sheriff is, um, going to help him with part of the cost. He's requesting forty-five hundred dollars in his budget, the probate judge budget. So the total, um, budget minimum is sixteen thousand five hundred, and that will decrease the contingency budget.
And I'm assuming you're asking for a movement second to approve those two amendments? You want me to do them together as one, or?
Yes.
Would y'all prefer me break them apart? Together, all right. I need a, a movement second to approve or disapprove, however y'all wanna do it, the, uh, the budget amendments for those two departments. Should move the second. I have to move the second, uh, move, movement second to approve, correct, all right. Have a movement second to approve, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you, all right? Those have been approved. Anything else with the financial report, Ms. Beck?
I don't know.
All right, thank you very much. Take care of that. That brings us under item number seven, under consent agenda. A part of the consent agenda, we signed a Georgia County intern, internship, and we signed a Georgia County internship.
Internship.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad you're all taking leadership Pickens, thank you. Internship program grant agreement by and between the ACCG and Pickens County. The grant will pay an intern up to two hundred hours at ten dollars an hour per hour for work performed between May first of twenty sixteen and September of twenty sixteen. This is at no cost to the county. The intern will be helping in the planning and development office. Pickens County received this grant last year as well, so that has, that has already been approved. Richard, has anybody been put on staff at that? Are you still taking applications, or what are you, how are you proceeding with that?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We are still taking applications. This is for any current college student or grad student, and we've received a few applications. We're starting to line up interviews, and as it specifies, anytime between May first and September first, the intern can work fifteen to twenty hours a week typically, uh, up to a maximum of two hundred hours, and the intern will go through all the typical processes of being a county employee, be vetted, um, take all the tests that, that a, you know, part-time employee would, so that we know that this is a, a totally legitimate person. And then that person will be paid, and at the end of the internship period, we will send all the information to ACCG, who will in turn refund us the money.
And I'm assuming that the intern that's taking this would have some sort of, uh, knowledge to the fact that this is the goal that they're gonna be working towards for the, for the future, after planning and development zoning, or whatever the issue is?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Typically, it's gonna be somebody who's interested in political science, public administration, um, but, you know, if it's an undergrad student who is interested, say, in, in general, um, you know, uh, doesn't know exactly what they wanna do, but it's in the field of liberal arts, it may be English, history, business, something like that, that's also a possibility.
All right. Any other questions for Richard on that? All right. Thank you, Richard. Uh, item B, we signed a proclamation designated in the week of February the twentieth through the twenty-seventh of twenty sixteen, that's FFA week, and this is the, the proclamation, whereas FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resources systems, and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education at FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas FFA motto, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction of purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education, and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Therefore, I do hereby designate the week of February the twentieth through the twenty-seventh of twenty sixteen as FFA week. Taking care of that one. And then that brings us down to item number C, we signed Keep Pickens Beautiful proclamation designated April as the Great American Cleanup Month. Keep Pickens Beautiful will be celebrating its twenty-seventh years in existence. And the proclamation reads also, whereas Keep Pickens Beautiful has sponsored the Great American Cleanup in the cities of Jasper, Talking Rock, Nelson for the month of April. Whereas the whole month of April, residents will be able to dispose of four off-rim passenger tires for no charge at the Camp Road Recycling Centers. Whereas on April sixteenth, from nine AM to twelve PM, Keep Pickens Beautiful will sponsor a shredding event in the parking lot behind KPB office at fifty-six South Main Street. The cost will be four dollars per banker box. Whereas Keep Pickens Beautiful will be celebrating its twenty-seventh year in existence in Keeping Pickens Beautiful. Whereas Keep Pickens Beautiful Adopted Road Volunteers will be picking up their assigned roadways during April. Now therefore, do I, Robert Jones County Commissioner, John Weaver, Mayor of the City of Jasper, Randy Banks, Mayor of Talking Rock, hereby congratulate the directors, staff, and volunteers of Keep Pickens Beautiful. I encourage our residents to join me in recognizing the valuable contributions made by the vibrant community, and extend best wishes to continued success and fulfillment in the years to come. Signed on the fifteenth day of March in the year of twenty sixteen. That has been done. All right, then we have in a, a consent agenda, which is the Pickens First Week Proclamation twenty sixteen, and first is F-E-R-S-D. Um, whereas the First Foundation of Childhood Literacy was chartered by the State of Georgia in nineteen ninety-nine as a result of a Georgia citizen, Robin First. And whereas, the mission of the First Foundation is to offer free to all preschool children in Georgia age-appropriate books for the Read-to-Me Library each month, along with the newsletter, Child's Activity Sheet, and Parents' Reading Guide, and whereas, whereas, the Rotary Club of Jasper in two thousand and nine accepted the challenge to organize the First Found, First Program for over one thousand six hundred and fifty preschool children in Pickens County, and mailed the first two books in May of two thousand and nine. And whereas, the evaluation of Pickens First Foundation for Childhood Literacy has shown that children in Pickens County kindergarten who receive First Books were more ready to learn compared to the rest of the classroom as a whole. And whereas, research has continually shown that when adults read aloud to children from birth, it promotes increased language development and a better understanding of language, which leads to the literacy success. And whereas, the tireless work of the Pickens First Foundation Community Action Team, volunteers with the strong, strong support of the Pickens County community, have created a successive program which has mailed out over seventy-eight thousand free books since two thousand and nine to Pickens County children under the age of five. And whereas, the twenty sixteen goal of the Pickens First Foundation is to increase enrollment of preschoolers in the program, which will require over one thousand books to be mailed each month to Pickens County children at a cost of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And whereas, the Vernal Equinox occurs on, ah, on March twentieth, twenty sixteen, and March, the first day of spring, twenty sixteen. Be it therefore resolved at March twentieth through the twenty-seventh of twenty fifteen is proclaimed as Pickens First Week throughout the county of Pickens, State of Georgia, and USA. Thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number eight, under old business. Mr. Dever, do we have any old business? Don't have any old business. That brings us under nine, under new business. A, under new business, we have amendments to chapter four, advertising and signs, article one in general, section four dash thirty-five of Pickens County Court ordinances. And I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Richard Auger, Director of Planning and Development, to explain, uh, this item.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. This is an application by county staff in which currently freestanding signs on all public roads could be up to thirty feet tall and a hundred square feet in size. Based on research of Bartow, Cherokee, Dawson, Fannin, Forsyth, Gordon, and Lumpkin Counties, staff has prepared a proposed revision. It may be appropriate to regulate freestanding signs based on the road on which the signs are placed. Larger signs would be allowed on heavily traveled roads to help promote businesses. There would be a limitation on the size of signs on less traveled, more predominantly residential roads to help preserve mountain vistas and views of other scenic locations. So essentially, as proposed, currently, anywhere over the county, somebody could put a freestanding sign up, no matter if it's residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, uh, up to thirty feet tall, a hundred square feet in size. As proposed, if somebody wants to put up a permanent freestanding sign on five fifteen, the, the few sections that are in unincorporated Pickens, the max height would be twenty feet. The max size, as is right now, would be a hundred square feet, so that would not change on five fifteen. For the other roads that have state route designations, like one oh eight and fifty-three, the max height would be fifteen feet, and the max size would be fifty square feet. And then on our local public roads, um, Hill City Road, Cove Road, et cetera, it would be max ten feet tall and max thirty-two square feet in size.
Your recommendation is for us to go ahead and vote on this tonight, or can we hold this over in case they want to look at the ordinance a little further?
It, it depends on if there's any questions, any discussion. Planning Commission recommended approval of it on Monday when they met, and this is based on research. I, I haven't heard of anything, um, you know, we've had some questions, but we haven't had any, um, concerns that I've received. Um, we, we properly advertised in the newspaper for this text amendment. Um, you know, you could vote on it tonight, you could vote on it at the next week with scheduled meeting, either way.
All right. You all heard the recommendations. Do y'all have any questions in regard to this item?
I think the research did well, and I'd say you go ahead and vote.
All right. I need a movement second then for, uh, to go ahead and approve the change of this ordinance to go ahead and clarify, get it in the ordinance book, if that's what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
All right, need movement second to approve.
Second.
Have a movement second to approve, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. Go ahead and approve that amendment. What was the vote with the Planning Commission on this recommendation?
It was you, Nellis. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. That clears up new business, under item number ten, under action items, uh, we need to approve the amendment, we need to approve the minutes, uh, item number one, uh, the regular board meeting, which is February eighteenth, twenty sixteen. Uh, Ms. Dever has, has emailed y'all those, a couple of those minutes. Do you have any questions or any changes we need to make to those? All right, I need a move to, to approve those minutes.
Second.
Move in a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. And then item number two, under our last work session on March third, twenty sixteen, uh, same thing, y'all seen any corrections or amendments we need to make to that one? All right, so, we need to, okay, we got a move to accept, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a movement a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. That brings us down to a rezone request, item B. Uh, let's see here. Number one, rezone, RZ dash zero one dash sixteen dash one one nine one, Brian and Misty Johnson, Carlin Road, Jasper, suburban residential to agricultural parcel, zero five seven dash zero zero one, sixty-seven point seven three five acres. Amendment one oh one, the Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a complete application on January nineteenth of twenty sixteen from Brian and Misty Johnson requesting a change in the land use classification of suburban residential to agriculture on sixty-seven point seventy-four acres located on Carlin Road in Jasper, Georgia. The intent, purpose of the rezone request, if approved, would be for the purpose of harvesting the timber, clearing the land, and to be ceded for pasture and utilization for raising beef cattle. A public hearing was held on the fourteenth of March of twenty sixteen regarding this application in the Pickens County Commissioners' Room, meeting, uh, meeting room before the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and the public, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted seven yes and zero no to approve the rezone request on sixty-seven point seventy-four acre parcel contained on tax map parcel number zero five seven dash zero zero one. Uh, the Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for your review and decision. See if there is. All right, we have a, have a move to accept. May I get a second?
Second.
Have a movement a second, any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you. We are accepting that rezone request. And then I have another one here, item two, rezone for RZ dash zero one dash sixteen one one nine two, Tom Shaw, Carlin Road, Jasper, suburban residential, RR, to rural residential, suburban residential, SR, to rural residential, RR, parcel zero five seven dash zero one one dash zero zero one, sixty-seven point seven two five acres. Amendment one oh two.
I'm not tackling the suburban residential.
I see that.
Sorry.
Okay. All right, and this is also the, uh, Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on January twenty-first of twenty sixteen from Tom Shaw, requesting a change in the land use classification of suburban residential, which is SR, to rural residential, which is RR, on sixty-seven point seventy-two acres located on Carlin Road in Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of this rezone request, if approved, would be for the purpose of to clear approximately ten acres of land for pasture and build his personal residence. A public hearing was held on, on the fourteenth of March of twenty sixteen regarding this application in the Pickens County Commissioners' Meeting Room before the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and the public, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted seven yes and zero no to approve the rezone request on the sixty-seven point seventy-two acre parcel contained on tax map, tax map parcel number zero five seven dash zero one one dash zero zero one. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for review and decision. Do you accept your recommendation?
Second.
Have a movement a second to accept. Any further discussion? None being all that favor, let nobody saying aye. None opposed, thank you very much. That has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Dever. And that brings us down to another item, item C. Um, we have started, we've got some prices together for, uh, security cameras for administration building, and as most of everybody knows here, you don't have to go through metal detectors, uh, don't have security guards, uh, that way in this particular building for security, which we have not had that issue in the past, thank God, here in Pickens County. But we would like to go ahead and put it out that we would like to install some security cameras just in case, especially at the front doors and all the other exterior doors here in this administration building. Uh, that will be monitored, uh, twenty-four seven through the nine-one-one system, for heaven forbid, any kind of emergency situation. Um, I would like to have a movement second to go ahead and proceed with the planning of that, and we're looking at it, pop, do you remember what the bid was on that? I, I can't remember, but anyway, what I'd like to do is, is go ahead and at least ask- I, I can't remember, but anyway, what I'd like to do is, is go ahead and at least ask for the approval of, of the commission board to go ahead and proceed with, with pricing and getting that started here, uh, for this particular building. Sure move. And that's a move in a second and, and the further discussion would be, I'm not gonna do anything until I get back with the commissioners again and we look at the pricing on it. So with that being said, I have a move in a second to approve, any, any other further discussion? None being all that favor of the saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. That brings us down to item number eleven, under guests, guests, and guest comments, does anyone have any comments or questions or want to get out of here because it's such a beautiful day or?
I got one and it's really directed toward Keep Pickings Beautiful and BART. Uh, my question is, uh, in April, are we having the tire collection for Keep Pickings Beautiful at the dumps?
Yes, uh, that was part of the proclamation.
Yeah, but, um, so the whole month of April, that's how I'm trying to get this so that I can-
Four, four tires, four tires per family.
Per day.
No, four tires per family, per month.
Okay. Next question is, uh, is that gonna be put in the paper and because every time, you know, nobody ever sees it, nobody ever knows about it.
It's supposed to be in the paper, uh, the papers.
This young lady sitting on the front row is sharing that.
If it doesn't get in the paper, everybody can point to her.
Okay.
The office was supposed to send something to the paper to have it in there prior to April to let people know, 'cause we had to wait for the proclamation to be signed, get approval from the county before we could advertise it.
Yeah, we've just got so many tires blamed everywhere.
Four per family, four per family per month, put it on the paper. Pardon?
Four day.
No, 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 no. Uh, any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I got one, going back to the security cameras and, uh, in my opinion, the Tax Commissioner's Office, they used to have some kind of security.
That's all we're working on.
They're pretty lit, too.
That's all we're working on. Any further comments? Jerry's good to see you right there, I didn't see you sitting there. Well, I'm gonna go ahead, before I adjourn this meeting, first of all, I want to thank the young men and women that are sitting back there in the back. Uh, thank y'all for being here, uh, always enjoyed having you, having young folks who can see how their government works. Um, granted, we're still kinda winging it, I guess, one day at a time, but, but thank y'all for being here, it's really, really nice to see y'all here. So if y'all have any other questions in the future, please call my office, um, or you'll see probably all three of us walking around town here once in a while, don't, don't hesitate to ask. But if nobody has anything else to say, y'all have a beautiful weekend, beautiful weather and y'all be careful, thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned.